The committee of the whole meeting for October 7, 2025 is hereby called to order at 5:09 PM. Had a slight technical problem, so appreciate everybody's patience. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza, Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez, Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benuelos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bate.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White, and Mayor Lash is present.
Next will be approval of the minutes of Tuesday, September 16, 2025. Committee of the whole meeting, is there a motion? Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. As presented, let the records reflect that Alderman Nunez has joined the meeting at 5:10 PM. So there's Alderman Nunez, a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from the previous COW meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by voice vote. And next we'll do the mayor's report. John, what do you got?
Thank you so much, Mayor. A celebratory evening here at Committee of the Whole. We're going to start out by honoring an organization who spent 50 years providing excellent service and impact to the city of Aurora, and that's the Quad County Urban League. Let's give them a round of applause. We'll invite up members of the Quad County Urban League to join Mayor Lash up in front for a special proclamation. If there are any alderpeople who'd like to join them as well for the proclamation, you're welcome to come down as well. As everybody gets up to the stage, it's worth noting that the Quad County Urban League has their annual Equality Gala taking place on Saturday, October 25. We're honoring them here tonight to be sure to promote that event, as they just celebrated their 50th anniversary in the city of Aurora back in July, so here we are tonight to honor them for that anniversary, too.
First, let me just say thank you for putting this together, John, and to thank the Quad County Urban League for all your work in our community. Want to just quickly read the proclamation, and then we'll turn it over to you, the executive director, to make a few comments. Whereas on July 14, 1975, the Quad County Urban League opened its doors in Aurora to fulfill an important mission, responding to the absence of a community-based organization that addressed the needs of academic achievement, job placement, and training, equal access to employment, housing assistance, and cultural enrichment. Whereas for 50 years, the Quad County Urban League has empowered individuals in the fields of economic development, employment, education, youth advancement, housing, community planning, health and wellness to individuals and families across the city of Aurora, King County, DePage County, Will County, and Kendall County. And whereas these valuable services have helped an innumerable amount of area residents secure equal opportunities, as the Quad County Urban League passionately advocates for all its disadvantaged persons and people of color, including African-Americans, women, and disabled individuals. Whereas the city of Aurora expresses its heartfelt gratitude to the Quad County Urban League for its impressive 50-year tenure in Aurora and its exceptional commitment to equity, empathy, and opportunity for all. Therefore, I, John Lash, Mayor of the City of Aurora, do hereby commend the Quad County Urban League for its half-century of service and leadership, and proclaim July 14, the founding day of the esteemed organization, as Quad County Urban League Day in the city of Aurora, and express the appreciation of the citizens of Aurora to Quad County Urban League for its decades of service to our community. Thank you so much. And just briefly, I am a graduate. I attended, there was a couple of years in 2009 to 2012, 13, when the economy really was bad, decided to retrain myself and go through some of the green building programs, and I did it at the Quad County Urban League. So I'm also a student and recipient of those benefits. But I want to turn it over to Theody Gillespie to share a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate that, and to the city council, but I'd like to give a shout out to Alderman Mike Seville for, you know, putting this and your leadership behind and making this happen, and then, of course, to my great team over here, because we've been really working hard to make a difference in our community. And so as you indicated, we're here to provide the training and resources to get people the opportunity to be able to have a career that's sustaining to themselves as well as their family. Thank you so much.
So congratulations again to the Quad County Urban League for 50 years in Aurora. Here's to 50 more, one more round of applause.
But wait, there's more.
So again, be sure to check out the Urban League's Equality Gala taking place on Sunday, October 25. You can visit their website for more information. Next proclamation up we have here tonight is Fire Prevention Week. It is National Fire Prevention Week across the United States of America, so in partnership with the Aurora Fire Prevention Bureau and the Aurora Regional Fire Museum, the city of Aurora is going to be celebrating Fire Prevention Week with a special proclamation here tonight. We'd like to invite members of both the Fire Prevention Bureau and the Regional Fire Museum to accept the proclamation with Mayor Lash up front.
Okay, well, happy fire prevention month. The, this is actually a very important issue. We just had another serious fire this weekend on the east side, and fire prevention is not just the job of the fire prevention part of our fire department, it's the part of the entire city, including our building permits. A lot of fires happen because of electrical fires. A lot of them happen because people left a candle burning or a cigarette burning and then fell asleep and it caught on fire. So it's an awareness issue, as well as making sure that we're adequately inspecting all the building projects and rehab projects that happen throughout the city of Aurora. So without any further ado, the city of Aurora Fire Department is committed to protecting those who live in and visit our community from the hazardous of fire, and the fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, with the National Fire Protection Association reporting an increase in battery-related fires as of 2025, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas the proper disposal of recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas the city of Aurora first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through fire prevention, safety, education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Chicago into Fire Safety, Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore I, Mayor John Lash, do hereby proclaim October 5 to 11, 2025, as National Fire Prevention Week in the city of Aurora, Illinois, and encourage all residents to recognize and appreciate the hard work of our fire department and first responders while also undergoing education and training to help prevent fires from taking place in our community. As I said, it's everybody's responsibility. I want to give Fire Marshal teams an opportunity to speak. Nope, don't have anything. He's going to advocate, he's going to advocate for a bigger part of the budget. I know what he wants. And I'll give Brian an opportunity to say congratulations.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. On behalf of the fire museum and all those that we work with, the fire department, day in, day out, just thank you for all of your support of the museum and our community, and just want to say, you know, it's been an honor working with the fire department. The museum was established in 1966, opened in 68, and we've been the proud stewards of it since 1988. So we're proud to be here in Aurora and look forward to continuing working with not only the city, but the fire department and all of our residents, both those that call Aurora home and those that visit us.
Okay, well, that'll wrap it up. Thank you, everybody.
Again, the theme of this year's Fire Prevention Week is Charge Into Fire Safety, which focuses on safe practices for lithium-ion batteries. And we'll let everybody take a picture real quick, too. Ready, one, two, and three. Well, as everybody heads back to their seats, a roundup of a couple of events taking place here in Aurora this weekend. Luminora returns this weekend with Luminora Fest Weekend. The three-day festival takes place this Friday through Sunday throughout downtown with a great variety of live music. Motown Nation takes the IBW Local 461 to 701 Stage to kick things off Friday night at 6:00 PM. The Popular 16 Candles will be here Friday at 8:00 PM. Saturday will feature Sin, Anesthesia, and Selena the Show at 6:00 and 8:15 PM respectively, and we'll see Sunday Fearless, the Taylor Swift Tribute Band, and Hairbangers Ball. It's going to be a huge weekend, and obviously a huge couple of weeks with Luminora here in downtown, taking place from the 10th through the 26th. If you want more information on the installations or the concert schedule, you can go to experienceluminora.com. That is experienceluminora.com. National Cybersecurity Awareness Month is here. It's going to continue with the free virtual cybersecurity workshop, Think You're Hiding on the Internet. It's going to be hosted this Thursday at 2:30. It's free, it's open to everybody in the community. You can log on and find out more at aurora.l.us/cybersecuritybriefing. We're going to be honoring that next week at city council with our IT department and our cybersecurity team here, so look out for that. And finally, the Diwali celebration coming up this Saturday, or Sunday, excuse me, at Matea Valley High School, hosted by the Indian-American Youth and Outreach Advisory Board. Completely free event, begins at 12:30. Mayor Lash will be there. I will be issuing a proclamation for Diwali in the city of Aurora, so it's going to be a great event, so encourage people, if you're available, to come and out. So between Luminora, between Diwali, and some of the other things to come, it's going to be another exciting weekend here in Aurora, so we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Final piece of the mayor's report, I know we already did this largely for a lot of the new council members coming in, but there is an agenda item revolving around the Jumbotron, so I just want to get a short presentation from our Public Works Department. And ACHA are going to come up just to answer a lot of the questions that the community members and some council members have had, and then we'll probably save the council discussion for this till that agenda item pops up. So I'll let you take it away. Thanks, Jason.
Good afternoon. Jason Bauer with the Department of Public Works.
And I'm Jim Jarvis. I'm the chief marketing and programming officer for ACHA, and then general manager for River Edge Park.
Okay, so as the mayor said, just going to do a brief recap of what we presented a little earlier this year, but now with additional purchases coming forward to finish off the park. There have been a few questions, so we wanted to go over things and, again, give a status of where things are at and why some of these improvements are needed. So there's the park. This is the rendering that the architect did for us. Basically shows the area of the park in the center of the photo there, that large grass area. That's the area that's going to be served by the Jumbotrons, and you can also see some of the new structures that have been built, including the beverage pavilion on the back of the old hill, the new southern gate, and then there's a new restroom facility there, too, and again included is a new backstage facility. All these structures are well underway and looking to have most of them buttoned up before Kris-Kendall Market and then certainly before the concert season next year. So one of the reasons we thought this was a good idea to bring this forward is to really discuss what the purpose of this project was. The park, we're trying to increase the marketability of the venue in terms of getting new acts. We're trying to enhance the patron experience, and then ultimately, at the end of the day, increase the profitability of the park. So to summarize those new structures with, on this rendering, everything that's new to the park is highlighted in blue from the backstage building, the beverage pavilion, the new restrooms, and the new southern gate, and you can see on that south lawn area where the two Jumbotrons are going to go. So I think maybe this slide would be a good one for Jim to talk about maybe the marketability of the venue.
Sure. So when you talk to any agent that we work at, obviously agencies in New York and Chicago, everybody tells you the same thing anymore. Chicago is the most competitive concert market in the summer in the United States, with all the different venues you have, festivals like Lollapalooza, Windy City, Smokeout, Soldier Field, Wrigley Field, Ravinia, et cetera, and stuff. So for us, the idea was, you know, they came to us and said, what can we do to increase our profits? What can we do to make sure that River Edge Park is up for getting bigger acts, for drawing more people? And we made the recommendations. It was very simple. Number one was backstage, what Jason was just talking about was marketability is both marketability to agents and artists, and it's out front to the patrons. Backstage, when they built the facility, honestly, and it's no disrespect to anybody, I don't think anybody had a clear understanding of what they wanted to do with this facility. There was one dressing room backstage, and there are two bathrooms. To do a tribute band, that doesn't even cover it. The one dressing room is for one person. We've gotten away with a lot over the years on stuff, but what we've seen more and more is agencies are passing on us because we don't have the infrastructure backstage. What you need backstage is, you need facilities and dressing rooms for every artist that's there. You need showers, you need bathrooms, you need a proper place to actually feed the artists when they're there. Right now, what we had was, we had an old construction trailer we were getting away with, and we were setting up food in there to feed people on things. After a show, people don't realize it, crews have to shower. They're on the road, they're on tour. We were renting rooms over at the Holiday Inn, and we would do day rooms so they can take showers over there. We were getting passed on by multiple bands because we don't have the facilities to have multiple bands on tour, so they'd go to a ravinia, they'll go somewhere else besides us. So all those things that we built backstage, we built specifically to be able to market to those artists, draw the bigger acts, draw the acts that were getting ready to walk away from us. One of the biggest, most successful acts we have, or most successful consistent acts we have every year, is a band called Get the Letter. They sell 6,000 tickets every time out on stuff. We happen to have helped that band early on in their career. We became close with them. I told them that the founder, we were closing the park in '25 for all this work, and he said, that's great, because honestly, the band's at the point that we've eliminated every facility like yours in the country around, and they really and truly wanted to step away from us if it wasn't for the fact that we had a personal relationship with them, one of the biggest tribute bands, and it is a tribute band, right? It's not even, you know, John Fogerty was going to walk away from us over it. Number two, out front, a variety of situations. You're talking about making sure we have the best personal experience for patrons. So what we're doing when we're marketing to them, we needed bathrooms. One of the biggest complaints we ever had, and one of the biggest problems we have at the park is, there was one set of bathrooms at Earth Deck. Those lines would back up and close off and became safety hazards, as APD would tell you, and we'd have to clear those. To get into those, we brought porta-potties out. The problem is, most people don't want to use porta-potties, and honestly, what we learned, especially from surveys, is most of the women didn't want to use the porta-potties. Porta-potties are also dark at nighttime, and no matter how much we cleaned them, people wouldn't use them. So we did the basic thing. We added 23 new women's restrooms, 17 new men's restrooms, three family restrooms, which wasn't built when the park first started. Another problem was the beverage. So we would send up temporary tents around the park, and we would use those. It doesn't give us enough, number one, lanes that we're actually able to serve the patrons. As most patrons will tell you, the lines got pretty long at times because we weren't able to get in there, set up the POSs, as all the systems that we needed to do under these tents. The goal is to make it as smooth as possible, and honestly, one of the biggest ways that we also make money in a venue our size is selling beverages. So that's a 20-window, right, Jason? 20-window new serving station that they put in. So now, the other problem was the tents. We didn't have draft beer, we had canned beers, limited people's ability, what they really and truly wanted. There was only one location to get draft beers. We would hear that all the time as well, the lines were very long, we had four windows over there. That facility right there solves a variety of problems. On top of it, we want to increase the attendance. So that grass area that Jason talked about, that is the only area, you're landlocked at River Edge Park at that point. So the grass, we can get up to potentially another thousand people in the grass, but obviously, one of the challenges is, you put people in the grass, and we've got speakers out there, but in this day and age, the reality is, Jumbotrons are a way of life in the concert industry, so that's why we needed the Jumbotrons out there. We also expanded a path out there so we can add additional food trucks, and we have a new area that is, a new area out by Gate 4 where the bridge is, that's a new entrance area. That was set up there so we can get people in quicker. We've got permanent storage out there now for wanding people, the things that we need to get people in and out as quickly as possible, wider lanes, et cetera. So that's kind of the overview of the marketability of River Edge and the purpose of it.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. And so one of the other key components to the expansion is also making sure that it works well. works well with the Kris Kindle Market. You can see another architect rendering here that shows that we're, not this year, but next year, we'd be expanding the park further south, so we're going to get more vendors. And regionally, it's the biggest now?
Right. In fact, we just had, they move in next Monday. Takes 30 days to load in. Right now, we are the biggest Kindle market, bigger than Chicago as far as exhibitors are concerned. And I had a talk with Maran, the CEO from Kindle Market, and their goal is to make Aurora the biggest Kris Kindle Market, patron-wise as well, in the state of Illinois. This year, we estimate 325,000 people will come through those doors. That Kindle Market right there will truly be the biggest tourist attraction in Aurora. And so we work closely with Kris Kindle Market. We've got a five-year contract with them. So when we are looking at laying it out and where we're putting spider boxes permanently, how wide we're making bike pass, all of that was taken in consideration as well, so we can continue to grow that piece of business that spills out throughout Aurora.
So here's another rendering. It kind of showed, you can see the one Jumbotron on the left of the screen there. It's just kind of poking out. The other one that's on the Beverage Pavilion, that's one that we already have that's going to be hung there, but the two that would activate the grass area that actually the grass slopes towards would be in this area, so you can see. It's just expanded seating in the grassy area, much like on the front side of the Beverage Pavilion where people lay out blankets and lawn chairs. And so here's another view of that, of the top of the Beverage Facility, right where those steps are, those stairs, that's actually seating. That's about where the hill used to go backwards. So if you've been to a concert there, there was the big hill in the middle. So everything from those stairs back was essentially dead space. You couldn't use it for anything. The only thing that really happened there were some tables, and that's where some, the food vendors would be. But from a concert experience, there was no way to see anything back there, so that's why the Jumbotrons are needed, is to really activate that space regardless of this facility was here or not. But this facility in and of itself also increases the seating because now, whereas the slope of the hill was going down, we were building it up, and now there's also another VIP deck up on top as well.
And if I could, I do think that's a key point in all of this, that what we did is, people were thinking that we split the park in half. The park has not changed any whatsoever. The layout is still the same. What we tried to do is we tried to optimize every space that we can use and put it to good use. For instance, as Jason just said, there's a portion of that hill you couldn't put a seat on because it was slanted down. Now we've gone with the concrete, we can get an extra 200 or 300 people up there. The grass in the back, right, there was nothing back there. They've just got done, starting to do landscaping on it for next year on stuff with the Jumbotrons, et cetera. That was space, that was there and some people would sit there. Now we've got a space that we can actually activate and get people to sit in. And for a precedent, just so everyone knows, I know there's been some questions about, will somebody come to a concert to look at a Jumbotron? Ravinia does about 18,500 people. About 15,000 of those people are looking at a Jumbotron. 3,500 are only inside in the theater itself. You go to Soldier Field, you go see the Stones or Beyonce or whoever, first 50 rows, boy, you can see that stage great. Otherwise, you're looking up and you're going to a Jumbotron. It has just become the way of the world, but it's expected as well by patrons that are coming through the doors. And not just back there, what we're talking about. We start to see more and more in the contracts that we have and writers, that Jumbotrons need to be on either side of the stage, which is now standard practice across the board. And people wonder about that and go, well, who's watching that? That person in the front row staring at that artist for a little bit, right, until somebody starts doing a guitar solo and starts shredding on the guitar and everybody's eyes go to that Jumbotron. It's just a part of the patron experience. And now, especially those Jumbotrons that are, we have, that we added last year, or two years ago, to the sides of the stage, are becoming standard practice and they're being required by artists.
I think you hit on most all of this already, Jim. And there again, there's just another zoomed-in view of the rendering that, it circled in yellow there, that's where the two Jumbotrons would be. And obviously, you can see how much more seating it allows for, again, for attracting those larger acts, selling more tickets, and then ultimately turning the corner with profitability and, you know, between the Jumbotrons and the acts that we can get and the increase in the Kindle Market exposure, everything, everything was designed with this park with the idea of making both of those aspects more successful. So I guess just one other thing too, to bring up, is the contracting history. So we, we've been breaking this into pieces the entire time we've been going along because of the aggressive schedule and dealing with construction in a park that, again, if we worked, if we were to try and work around the concert season, I don't even know how we would have done it, so we did make the decision that we would close that down. But even with that, we're trying to build some pretty impressive structures within a 10-month timeframe between when Kindle loadout occurs in January to when load-in begins in October. So there's not a lot of time to do it. So as we were building things, we were still moving along. We came through not too long ago with the technology, or the package for the door strikes and the Wi-Fi throughout the park, which again, Wi-Fi is huge now that we're activating further south to make sure that we have proper Wi-Fi coverage for the vendors. And the last time I was here, I mentioned that the Jumbotron was coming, but just as another reminder, we do still have the furniture and fixtures for the buildings. Actually, you know, we need to put couches and tables and things like that in the backstage building, and then we are still coming forward with the audio bid package. So those three are still coming. And again, we've been doing this, just trying to keep things moving along and trying to hit our key targets for timelines too. And just a quick summary of the budget, you know, we're still working within the geo-bonds that were issued for the project. To date, we've still got about $10 million, give or take, left of work that's already under contract. And then between the Jumbotrons and our estimates for furniture and audio, we're still within the bonds that were sold for this project and a couple others, so we're still working within that original framework. So just from a funding standpoint, just so everybody is aware, you know, we've, the Jumbotrons have been on every picture, and that's really been one of the drivers of activating that space and trying to get as many people into the facility as we can.
And just to be clear on the bonds, those can't be used for the general fund. We can't transfer money into that. They have to be spent on items that can only, that we laid out in the bonds, that's what they can be spent on.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, there's only certain things that can, that bonds can be spent on, they can't be spent on personnel or things like that.
Are you guys both sticking around, able to stick around for when this comes up on the agenda if the council has questions?
Can we ask some questions now, or do you want to wait?
Let's get the public a chance to make public comment, because you might have questions that stem from their public comment as well, that you want to have answered.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. With that concludes the mayor's report. If any members came just to see the Jumbotron presentation or any other wards and wish to leave, you're welcome to leave now. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the COW meeting, we'd love to have you. Next section of the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Would you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the hall for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the hall shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment this evening?
Sherri Spears.
So Sherri Spears. Sherri Spears. I don't think she's here. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Sunnite.
Today is October 7, two-years anniversary, the terrorist attack on Israel. Remembering the lives lost, we pray for the victims, hostages, and their families who are attacked by the terrorist Hamas. May God bless Israel, even though you don't recognize it. To the Defend the Police Mayor, slashing the police budgets 20% or defending, defunding the police, you are destroying the sense of safety in Aurora. Defending the police is a bad idea. Defend the police will result in a smaller police budget, lower the police morale, and a wave of police retirement. Police officers are people who run towards danger and violence. They risk their lives, their own lives, they deserve respect. You should cut a budget from your mayor office 20%, because you don't have to run towards danger and violence every day, just like the police officers have to face danger every single day. And you want to cut 20% from the police department. Police officers are essential to keeping communities safe and we respect any ideas of, we don't reject any ideas of defending the police. Adequate funding is essential for effective law enforcement. Cutting police budget could increase crime, it is a risk for public safety. Reduced funds can also delay acquisition of outdated equipment. Maybe, I don't know, maybe ICE needs help from Aurora Department. Budget cuts makes departmentary staff causing remaining officers to work long hours. Fewer police officers will result slow response in times of emergency. Support of the police department stems from the critical role they play in maintaining public safety, reducing crime, and leading a safer neighborhood. So we reject your 20% cut budget from police department. I think you should cut it from the mayor office. Maybe you shouldn't have a heat this week.
Thank you, Sunnite. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Sandy Schmidt.
Welcome, Ms. Schmidt. You have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Hi, Sandy Schmidt, Ward 5. There's been a lot of discussion about the Jumbotrons, so I watched the September 22 Infrastructure and Technology Committee meeting and also did some research. The 800,000 is a change order and not part of the original budget. Is this all-inclusive, or will there be, will there need to be additional items like power sources, wiring, and audio equipment, or is it just for the TVs? Have you done a cost comparison for the last three to five years of revenue from the concerts and compare that to this change order to see the return on investment? Have you checked into renting them per event? I asked these questions because during the INT meeting on September 22, 2025, all statements that were made said, we believe we'll get more people and it should be beneficial. These are not exact quotes, so please watch the YouTube video, and it was about 28 minutes in for the details. You know, the economy is not getting better. Do you really anticipate having a full venue each time? In 2024, there were 12 concerts, and these concerts are not always family-friendly. What if we convert this space back to a park, open up some green spots, and host family events? What about low-cost movie nights with popcorn, setting up badminton courts for tournaments or having picnic days? Can we please reconsider repurposing this space for other uses? In concluding, in conclusion, the funding for this and two other projects is coming from a general obligation fund. I realize that the bond is already approved, but I think it's important to understand because how much debt we carry and our ability to pay off the bond affects our credit score. This is not free money. An additional 100,000 has already been used because of bad pipes and/or pavers were discovered. I believe that this money should be left in reserve for other serious unforeseen issues and that any money left over at the end of these projects can be used to pay down the bond. Based on the INT meeting, I heard no concrete evidence, information to say we'll get more name bands, big-name bands, or increased revenues because we're going to have more Jumbotrons. I realize that the council has additional information, and some of it was presented today, on how this might bring value to our community and that the prior administration has put the city in some serious debt, but because of that, I ask you to consider these factors before you spend our money and make your final decision. So after hearing that presentation today, you know, maybe there are other details behind this, so I don't know if there's like a benefit cost ratio that's been already, you know, you guys have already seen that might make it more believable that we should have this, but as of right now?
Your three minutes is up. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do. Theodosha Gillespie.
I'm sorry, what? Theodia. I am so sorry.
That's okay. I did that last name too.
You're not the first one. Theodia Gillespie, again, I want to thank the Alderman Office, I mean, the Alderman and Alderman Seville and the mayor's office for their great acknowledgement today. As Maya Angelou, one of my favorite authors, says, "When you give cheerfully and accept gratefully, you bless, you bless everyone." So again, thank you. For 50 years, the Quaid County Urban League has been fighting for equity opportunities and through our national tagline, empowering community and changing lives. We truly believe that. We have partnered with schools, businesses, cities, and families to open doors that might otherwise remain closed. However, we will not shy away from hard conversation, and tonight is no exception, so I apologize in advance. As we accept this proclamation with heartfelt gratitude, I must address something that is deeply troubling to the Black community, and that is the mayor's ongoing tolerance. And frankly, Mayor, your investment, interest, and divisive rhetoric throughout the community is just not acceptable. The mayor has injected himself into the call from the Black leaders in this community to address an inappropriate statement made by an East Aurora school board member, and you guys know her name, to resign. He advised her not to, and that the deputy mayor runs around and celebrate that Latino now runs the city and District 131. That's very offensive. He told her that we, and I'm assuming that's the city, have her back. The last time I spoke at the city council, we requested a meeting with the mayor to talk to Black leadership on the advisement in Alderman Seville in Aurora about the issue of not flying the Juneteenth flag, which is a recognized federal holiday, events that celebrate our community, no calls to this 50-year-old civil rights organization, the NWCP, or churches that have been in the community for 100 years. Let me be clear, Mayor, this is not about election, but another example, harmful, defaming speech directed towards African-American children and more broadly, towards any non-Spanish-speaking student in District 131. Let me also be clear about this behavior supports. It supports divisiveness over unity. It protects harmful narratives instead of protecting children. It stands in direct opposition to everything the Quaid County Urban League represent. When the mayor, when you use this hall, City Hall, to weaponize others, that undermines those principles and work against a very progressive organization like the Urban League, fight for every single day. I don't care what race he or she may be, we don't care. It is a problem for the Urban League and this community. So yes, members of city council, thank you so much for this honor, for 50 years of impact in this community, and we thank you for the recognition, but we also issue a challenge to you, Mayor. And if you truly want to honor the Urban League's milestone, you must do more than issue a proclamation. You must act, reflect on the values of fairness, dignity, and respect that our communities are, please show leadership. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Okay. If there's no more speakers, this concludes the public comments portion. Next, we'll move to the committee reports. I'll ask Chairman Mike Seville to give the BZNE committee report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There was three items that the BZNE committee considered. They're all related, so I'll read all three of them first before I begin speaking about the projects itself. The first one is 25-0738, Nordons Vacating of Water Main Easement and Cross Access Easement on the property located south of Bilter Road and west of New, North Yola Road in DuPage County, Iowa, Illinois 60502.
Consent.
The second one is 25-0735, Resolution Approving Revision of Final Platform Lots 1 and 5 of Butterfield Phase 2, Unit 5A subdivision of vacant land located south of Bilter Road and west of North Yola Road and establishing Lot 1 of Butterfield Phase 2, Unit 5A, three subdivision number one.
All right, so no, on the first item, if there's no objections or questions, Agenda Item 250738, are there any questions?
Well, can I read the last one, and then I want to explain, because that was related too?
Okay.
I want to explain a little bit about just what we're doing. May I do that?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll go through that, and then we'll go through which ones go on consent and which ones... We'll go through that, and then we'll go through which ones go on consent and which ones are not needed, no council action needed.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And the last one is 25-0736, Resolution Approving A Vision of the Final Plan on Butterfield Phase 2, Unit 5A Subdivision and Butterfield Phase 2, Unit 5A Resubdivision Number 1 Located South of Bilter Road and West of North Yola Road. So as the mayor was saying, the first one's an ordinance that we have to consider voting on at the next city council meeting. The next two were resolutions, and as we mentioned at the last city council meeting, they had an opportunity to be appealed. I understand they probably were not appealed, and so it stops here. But the gist of this development is a data center in the warehouse zone. They're doing a consolidation of two smaller lots and two smaller buildings into one larger lot and one larger building. There's lots of landscaping and screening. There is not much discussion at the BZNE committee with regard to its effects. The committee wanted to be sure about noise levels and the like. They also have no water usage come here because they have their own proprietary system, so that was a plus. So there'll be zero water usage, as I mentioned. There's going to be eight EV charging stations that are available for the public, and that's the gist of it, so, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. On the first agenda item, 250738, are there any questions?
Consent.
With no further questions, this item will go on consent agenda. The next two items, 250735, 250736, there's no council action needed.
Correct. And that's the report from BZNE committee, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Seville. Next, I'll ask Chairman Ted Masiacos to give the Finance Committee report.
Yes, Mayor. The Finance Committee met on September 25th, 2025, and reviewed the following items. Item 25-0693, A Resolution Authorizing Agreement for Administrative Services with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois for HMO, PPO, and Value HAS Group Health and Stop Loss Plan Administration for Period January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Consent.
Are there any questions on this agenda item? There being none, this item will be added to the consent agenda.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0706, A Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of a Grant Award of $4 million, I'm sorry, $4,033.65 for the Aurora Fire Department to purchase hazardous materials, equipment.
Consent.
Are there any questions on this agenda item or comments? If only it was 4 million. With no further questions, this item will go on the consent agenda.
Perhaps a Freudian slip. All right. Next item, 25-0715, A Resolution Approving the Purchase of Bulk Rock Salt in the Amounts of $70.79 per ton from Compass Minerals America, Inc., Overland Park, Kansas, for the Division of Street Maintenance under the DuPage County Department of Transportation of Illinois Joint Purchasing Agreement Bid for the 2025-2026 Winter Season.
Consent.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item? There being none, this item will be added to the consent agenda.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0732, Resolution Authorizing Sun Life Insurance to Provide Life Insurance Services for January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Consent.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item? There being none, this agenda item will be added to the consent agenda.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0733, A Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with Humana to Administer a Medicare Advantage Plan for Medicare Eligible Retirees for the Period of January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Consent.
Okay, just a quick question. I want to reach out to Dr. Caputo real quick to offer a brief statement. I think you may have wanted to add this to the unfinished business and put a little work into it.
Look, yes, Mayor, if you don't mind. With this renewal with Humana, there are a couple of networks within the Humana plan. The carrier, Humana, has come to an agreement with one of the networks for the new year, but not the other one. So what we'd like to do is put it on unfinished, and assuming that that all comes to consummation before, by the time of the next council meeting, we can approve it. If not, we'll have to re-study the issue.
Move to unfinished.
This agenda item will go to the unfinished business.
All right. Next item, Mayor, 25-0752, A Resolution Approving Estoppel Certificates for the Solar Farm Development at the Aurora Airport.
Are there any questions, questions or comments on this agenda item?
Yeah, I have a short presentation.
Okay.
Just a short presentation would be good.
Okay. Is anybody here from the airport? It'll be tell you what we can do. Why don't we put it on unfinished business and make sure that we're able to present to you at the city council meeting?
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished, Mayor. Item 25-0753, A Resolution Authorizing the Approval of an Amendment to the Agreement with MC2 to Provide Electrical Aggregation Services.
Consent.
We have a little presentation on this, please.
Is anybody here from Progressive? If you want to pick up the last agenda item, I'll let you hit that one too.
And the next one, oh, you're at it.
Yeah, just quickly, the city of Aurora has been...
Can you just begin with your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Arnold Trammell, Progressive Energy Group. I'm, we're consultants for the city of Aurora's energy purchasing and electric aggregation. To answer the previous question, we'll have somebody here from Sunco to explain the estoppel at the next meeting. Just quickly, the city of Aurora has been in electric aggregation programs since 2012, when there was a referendum passed by the residents that gave the city council authority to enter into electric aggregation agreements. The city's been pretty much in aggregation, electric aggregation programs for your residents almost continually since 2012. Early on in the programs, the first six years, the savings were significant. They were generally $200 to $300 per year per home. In the last five years, because the state of Illinois and ComEd has changed how they purchase electricity, there really isn't any savings any longer for the whole group of city residents. So the city is now, for the last four years, been in programs that the, basically about 30% of the homes in Aurora are in these aggregation programs. The other 70% are not in the aggregation programs, and the price in the aggregation program is exactly the same as the ComEd price. So there's no individual savings for the program. But the companies that, like in this case, MC Squared, they do make money on that 30% of the residents. ComEd has to charge everybody the same price, and some residents have better load factors than others. What does that mean? Residents that don't use a lot of power generally, 3 to 7, are considered good load factor customers. So those are the customers that are generally in the programs. But to do that, the MC Squared gives us unrestricted civic contribution to the city of Aurora. And in the two-year renewal, it's $270,000 over 24 months, or $135,000 per year, which is an increase from the expiring program, which is $103,200 per year. So the program again is ending in December this year. The other thing that's going to change this year is, the last time around, there was letters sent to every resident in the city of Aurora. This time around, there's only, only the 30% of the residents that are in the aggregation program are going to get the letters, so we're hoping to cut down the confusion. As many of the aldermen know, last time, there was five different letters sent out to every resident, and created a lot of confusion, and I'm sure you took some phone calls and emails. So this time around, it's going to be about 30, just the current residents in the aggregation program are going to get the letters. And then any resident who has moved into the city of Aurora in the last two years since the last aggregation program will get an additional letter. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions.
Are there any questions from the council on this agenda item?
Quick question.
Alderwoman Smith?
So those who do get the letters, and they call me or they call us, what do we say to them? Why am I getting this letter? What do I need to do? Do I need to make a phone call? Does it automatically happen? Because the letters have all been a little bit different.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good question.
Just a quick clarification. It's an opt-out letter, right? That gives the resident the opportunity to opt out of the program, and we're only sending it to people who are currently opt-in.
Understood.
Right, okay.
But they've got to specifically opt out?
Correct.
And it says that in the letter?
Right.
So they're automatically in, and that's the 30% that are already in?
Correct.
Plus the new people.
Plus any new residents that...
So if a new resident calls me and says, "I just got this letter," and I'll say, "You have a choice, but you, if you don't want this choice, you must opt out."
Correct.
Okay, we all heard it. We're going to hold you to that.
Yeah, and that's part of the state law that allows aggregation. The state law states they have to be opt-out programs, and I know that creates confusion, and some people don't like that.
It creates confusion with residents, but as long as we know what to say.
And we've worked with John to make sure the letter is good, and I'm going to be meeting with Ricky Benjamin at your customer relations.
Yep, we're going to, we're going to have the 311 call center be prepared with adequate information, so hopefully the alderpeople don't take the, don't take the calls and have to be experts. They'll have some backup information.
Right. But, and we know, though, some residents will call, even though the letter says to call other people, some, some of the residents are going to call the alderman directly.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this agenda item?
Yeah, before you go, Mayor, if I may just add a little bit, what we talked about at committee, and one is, there's no fee to opt out, there's no charge.
Correct, and you can opt out at any time.
And two is, part of your program, it also includes a civic support or civic contribution as well.
Correct.
So whoever's participating in this program is theoretically also helping out with civic support here for our city various ways as well.
Correct.
All right. I just want to make sure we get that out as well, so moving forward. And the letter will be also translated into Spanish, because in our committee, we talked about that.
Correct.
For anyone who may be Spanish-speaking, primary language for their understanding.
Yeah, it'll be double-sided, one-sided English, one-sided Spanish.
And you have been working, you are working with staff to make sure that everything is, say, Ts are crossed and Is are dotted before that letter goes out.
Yeah, the city staff is...
We'll sign off on it.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Their motion to put this on the consent agenda?
Consent.
Okay, with no further questions, this item will go on consent.
All right. Next item, Mayor, 25-0754, Resolution Authorizing the City Treasurer to Consent to the Mortgage of the Leasehold Interest of TD Hanger, Inc., at the municipal, at the Aurora Municipal Airport.
Consent.
Mayor, Alderman Nunez. Is there anyone here that could go over a presentation or... We can probably have somebody, it'll probably be Patrick, who can address this and probably parts of the solar at city council, if you'd like it put on unfinished, or would you like it on consent, and we can just...
I have to move it unfinished for now.
Well, Mayor, there are no more items on the agenda, and that concludes the report from the Finance Committee, of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Masiacos. Next, I'll ask Chairman Franco to give the PHST committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for September 23rd, 2025 was canceled. That concludes the PHST report.
Thank you, Chairman Franco. Next, Chairwoman Juana Garza is not here to give the IT committee report. Are you prepared to give the, give the report for the committee? Thank you.
I can do that.
We'll ask Alderwoman Babe to step in as the vice chair.
Vice chair is Alderman Masiacos.
I'm the vice chair, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
He's the vice chair, but if...
Did you have a question?
No. If you want me to go over it, I can.
Are you prepared?
I'm ready, Mayor.
Nope, sorry, we'll have the vice chair step in.
Thank you very much.
You raised in and leaned in, I wasn't sure.
Mayor, the Infrastructure and Technology Committee met on September 22nd, 2025, and reviewed the following items. Item 25-0619, Resolution Authorizing the Purchase and Installation of New Pumping Equipment for New Well 105 in the not-to-exceed amount of $178,213.
Consent.
No further questions, this item will go on consent.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0663, A Resolution Authorizing Procurement of an Enterprise Agreement for GIS Software from Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., of Redlands, California, in the Amount of $562,100.0 for a three-year term plus Year 2 and Year 3 of Arc GIS Indoors and Business Analyst.
Consent.
No further questions, this item will go on the consent agenda.
Next item, Mayor, 25-0702, A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Golf Course Patio Furniture and Portable Bar from Sister Bay Furniture Company using the TIPS USA Cooperative Contract for $67,586.10 from the Golf Operations Fund.
Can I get a little brief presentation on that?
I'm going to ask Golf to come up and give us a little background.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Jeff Schmidt, Phillips Park Golf Course. So the current patio furniture out back right now, it's just standard picnic tables out back. Oh, we're looking the backside of the golf course, 10 tee box, 18 green on a large patio that's been, that's built back there. We are looking, looking at authorized to purchase patio furniture that's going to be accommodating and comfortable for our golfers. We want to create an experience out back that's going to ask golfers to linger, hang around, support the food and beverage operations, support the total golf, golf operation as well. The mobile bar is going to be used when we have special events out back that we can use to service the customers, to them, versus them having to come inside the clubhouse, make the purchase, walk back out, so on and so forth. Again, the mobile bar will be available to service those customers, that we can use iPads to provide payments through credit card, cash, so on and so forth.
Thank you.
And then this was a 2025 decision package, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And just to, I guess we can go through the rest of the golf update when we talk about greens fees and so forth.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Consent.
Any questions, without any other questions, this item will go on the consent agenda.
Mayor, the next item, 25-0739, A Resolution to Approve an Amendment to an Existing Contract with HR Green in the Amount of $247,259.51 for the Purposes of Land Acquisition.
Consent.
Are there any other questions on this agenda item? There being none, this item will go on the consent agenda.
Mayor, next item, 25-0740, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Purchasing to Execute Contracts and Change Orders for the Ongoing Work at River Edge Park for Jumbotron Purchases and Paver Replacement.
Consent.
Okay. You want this to go on unfinished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion on this item while we have both Public Works and ACHA here?
I do have questions. Should we wait till we get to that point? To unfinished business?
We can take them now, if you'd like.
I would need...
At first, I had Alderwoman Babe.
Okay. Since the resident brought this question up, I wanted to check, how much does it cost to rent these jumbotrons and storage costs?
Sure. The jumbotrons, 14, about $14,000 a week for two jumbotrons. And there's still labor involved in putting them up and taking them down.
And then just to follow up on that, if we were to rent them?
That's what I'm saying.
We would have to pull them down and store them on our property, or store them on...
Yeah, because the park is still, that's one of the things, just to clarify, the park's still open during the week for a Friday show. The market's shut down around... for a Friday show. The market's shut down around 10 o'clock in the morning on a Thursday. Reopens if we don't have a show on a Sunday, about Sunday at 10 o'clock in the morning. So, yeah, everything, all that comes down so we can open up the park and make it publicly accessible.
Alderwoman Bae, go ahead.
And is it beneficial to have it right away just because all the other construction is happening?
Yeah, I think for a couple of reasons. If we're really and truly looking to activate that area, that you need something back there for the patron experience. If we're going to make that, and right now, what we'll do is we'll have families that kind of hang out back there. And there are speakers back there, but if we're really and truly trying to sell people on that as an expanded area, they're going to want to see the show, yeah. And it's, I would assume, Jason, there's a benefit to us because we have to also put up the structures that go along with that.
Correct, yeah. So that's the component of this, that's the change order piece. So the Jumbotrons, we've always planned on buying directly. The five Jumbotrons that are there currently, we contracted directly with the vendor. We didn't go through a third party, so we didn't, there was no need to have that in the Wegman contract. So we've been dealing with the same company that we bought the other five from so that everything's the same, all the parts are the same. But there is a change order component to this because we do need them to build the structure. Again, when we started doing everything, we were out to bid for the backstage building before the beverage pavilion, the beverage pavilion building was even completed. Even so much so that the backstage building, we were bidding, going vertical with it while we were actually working on the foundations. So the last component of that was, we didn't know exactly what was going to, what was going to hold these Jumbotrons. There was nothing for R.C. Wegman to get bids on, so that's the change order piece, that piece. And then, again, there was a large section of the permeable pavers that are out there that needed to be replaced for ADA compliance and for a lot of areas that had been deteriorated. And that wasn't part of the scope either. So that's the change order piece of it. But to Jim's point and to your question, yes, it makes sense to have the Wegman contractors do it while they're there. While the, while the park is torn up, while we have trades that are doing all these same work items, rather than trying to go outside the scope of having those people that are already there inside Wegman's construction fencing with, you know, they're the ones in charge of the safety and the security of everything on site. So to do something other than a change order to do that wouldn't make sense. And we theoretically could come back in a year or two or three to do it then. But then, to Jim's point, then we're potentially going to be causing ourselves that loss of revenue and attraction for other acts.
And the last thing, except for the construction part, were they plan of original design?
Yeah, and that's where I think I highlighted it on, on the renderings. I think the very first rendering we ever even got from the architect showed that they were there. That was one of the key things that we talked about with them was, you know, finding a way to activate that space. They were doing a rental unit before, but we made a decision along the way, the whole project team, like, if we're going to do this, let's, why are we going to come back and do this one small piece when we're spending all the rest of this money? It should really happen now.
Even if you go back to the May presentation, it says next steps, and it's listed on there as the next step after. Then we were discussing the cameras. Now we're moving to this step. Alderwoman Smith, and I'll come to this side.
Thank you for clarifying that change order piece because I think it's been confusing to a lot of residents and to some, to some aldermen that the change order was not the actual Jumbotrons themselves. They'd always have been a part of this project, so I appreciate the clarification there. So let's, let's hypothetically go to the, I know you're laughing, I'm hypothetically, right? Go to the fact that the Jumbotrons aren't there. So we own these Jumbotrons now because they're part of the bond, right? We don't put them there. What happens to that big space that we have now created back there?
We've got a big space with a speaker back there, and that would be the extent of it. You know, we would try to market it to get people back there. It's going to be, especially now, as I said earlier, people are just used to it, Jumbotrons all over the place. And so it will be less likely to get people to want to get back there and hit that and truly utilize that space back there to its full capacity.
And I think things like that travel when you have the Jumbotrons back there and people know that they can come late and sit in the back and still see a great concert. I've been to Ravinia many times and I've watched many concerts on Jumbotrons. You know, I know everybody's trying to, you know, do what we can to penny pinch here and make sure, you know, so that we can get our budget taken care of, but this is something that has been part of this project for, since day one. So I do support this, and I appreciate you guys clarifying this whole change order piece for us.
And if I can clarify one point too, the other reason about two Jumbotrons, we looked at the options and worked with Nighthawks, and Nighthawk is the provider of that. So they do Jumbotrons for the Rolling Stones to Taylor Swift. And we also had our AV experts come in. The biggest challenge is doing a single Jumbotron because of the angles on that hill. The problem is, a quarter of each side of that hill is not going to have a, they're going to have a hard time seeing it because it blurs the higher the angle on stuff. So having two of those are positioned, and, you know, Jason's team has worked and Wegman and all the folks have worked to make sure it's positioned correctly so they can cover that entire area, give the best experience possible for everybody on the hill.
Alderman Nunez, then, Alderman Brero.
First, I'd like to start with, I appreciate everything you do, you and ACHA, and Jason, not to leave you out, appreciate you as well. When I'm looking at the image that was shared in the presentation, I see the large Jumbotron over the drink facility.
Yeah.
Right. And then, in the corner of this image, you can see one of the Jumbotrons. Just for clarity, what's the size, again, of the Jumbotron over the food and beverage facility? And then, I have a follow-up after that as well.
Oh, yes, sir. They're all the same, and I want to say they're 15 by 12.
And then, what's the distance, if I'm walking away from the screen south, what's the distance where those two extra Jumbotrons cross with that from a linear standpoint?
I'd have to dig into that one to get you an actual number.
Do you want to flip to the overhead picture to?
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is, is this Jumbotron already enough? Do we really need these other two that are coming from the west? And then, as we've seen in the past, let's say, well, with the sun setting in the west, what does that really do for visibility with those screens as patrons are, you know, trying to protect their eyes, so?
Sure. Actually, this image is a pretty good way to explain it. If you see, you see in that south area how there's lines that go through the hill there?
Mm-hmm.
Those are actually contour lines. It's not actually stepped like that. That's just the way that this rendering came out. So if you can see, that's showing you about how much of a grade break there is from the back of the green space along 25 going, going west towards the river. So if you see all those different grade lines, that's basically sitting like this. So if you think of a movie theater or anywhere else, you'd be sitting on that looking at the two new Jumbotrons, whereas if you were looking at the other one, you'd be, you know, tipping sideways, so really the...
You have to turn your head a lot.
Yeah, so the Jumbotron that's on the beverage pavilion, we're envisioning, you know, picnic tables, people hanging out there, waiting for their beverages. That would work good for those views. And then anybody getting further south, really, they're going to want to be looking towards the west. And I don't know, Jim, if you want to chime in on the sun?
Well, the other thing about that too is, so can you go back to the beverage pavilion picture if you wouldn't mind, Jason? So there's an area there that you can see that's kind of closer to the end of the picture, farthest away from the pavilion. Those are all picnic tables, so we set up a whole eating area over there for folks. So while people are eating, that's the Jumbotron that's serving the folks that are eating, getting their food, as you said, waiting in line for drinks. When we talked to the consultants about where we're putting the Jumbotron, they didn't think there was going to be a problem with the sun going down, et cetera, in that area and stuff. Yeah.
Alderman Brero?
Yes. Thank you for the information. I'm still trying to get clarity on the, on the change orders. So my understanding is the, the project had a contingency of about $900,000 roughly, and that we had already spent about half of that. So I'm trying to get clarity into, as to whether, how these change orders are going to affect the amount of contingency we hadn't already spent. Is this going to cause us to go over budget? That's, that's my main question.
No, it, it won't, but from a contingency standpoint, the, they set a specific amount of contingency aside that's based on the percentage of the cost of the structures that were part of the original, well, the original two bid packages that Wegman helped us with. So at this point, it might be premature to take money from that when the other buildings are still underway. There is still contingency money left, and, you know, if everything works out well and we don't eat into that, then that would just bring the overall project down because it is set aside in Wegman's contract. But those contingencies, like with any project, are for the things that were part of the bid. And since the Jumbotron structures were not part of that bid, it would, we don't want to eat into that and then find out that we have to come back to you all and ask for something later that's a scope change to one of these buildings. For instance, you know, the, the structural steel that we've had to make modifications on, on, on this structure right here, there's little things that go throughout the entire project, and we just don't want to take that money away because that's not really fair to Wegman or their existing contractors to say, well, it's not there anymore.
Right, right, that's an excellent point. So where I'm getting, going with this is that the, building those structures makes sense to do it now and, and replacing those pavers as well. But the Jumbotrons can be purchased later and, and we can see how we're going to end up budget-wise and if we're going to have other change orders, other costs that are unforeseen. We'll have those dollars, and then, and then we can revisit those, those Jumbotrons. The other thing that can be done is, we can move, we have five. You can move some from the front to the back if that's what is desired, to get more people in there. And then the other thing is, I recall when, when the Rivers Edge Park was being proposed, that there was a lot of discussion regarding naming rights and getting, you know, having opportunities to name things, you know, through, through donors. Donors want to give money, but they want to see their names and get the advertising. You know, here's some opportunities to say, hey, you know, you can, you can be the donor for these Jumbotrons and have your business name on there. I just think that we're not doing enough to try to get private dollars to pay for some of these things. And so when you talk about the GO bonds, you know, these bonds are not just for Rivers Edge Park. We have other projects that are going to be paid for by these bonds. We have three fire stations. We have some road construction projects. I know we're paying more money for, for moving utilities up in Belcher and Farnsworth and those kinds of things. So to say that we're not, we're going to come under budget, we look at all these different projects that are going all, all at the same time, it would make sense to put something like this that can, that can be put on hold, to put it on hold, and let's see how everything else falls out. That, that's just my perspective because, you know, we keep talking about the budget and how much we're, we're, we have a budget crisis, and we're trying to, to stretch our dollars and cover things that are essential, and that's where I'm coming from.
To your point, I mean, excellent point, and that's why I don't have the checkbook. I have to come and present everything, give you the information for all of you to decide. But, yep, certainly, that, that is one scenario that could definitely work. Whether it's in the best interest of the park or not, that's up for all of you to decide. But, yeah, if we built the structures, there's nothing to say we couldn't hang the Jumbotrons in a year or two years or three years. That's 100% correct.
How would that impact our launch? If people, if people's first experience at the park, we really wouldn't be expanding that whole back area. We, I'm just curious what your perception on that is, is you, you launched the park and, and we sell tickets back there and people are looking at the river instead of?
I think, again, it's just going to be a harder sell. Put the speaker back there, but if I can address one thing before I forget. I think trying to remove Jumbotrons from the front and moving them to the back would be a mistake. Every, at this point, you know, that's a part of that entire patron experience in the front of the stage. I would just leave them up there personally, and I would go with the speaker and back because, as I said before, people are, and some of the artists even call for Jumbotrons on either side of the stage as part of their contract, or, you know, it's just the way of the world anymore in the concert industry. To your point, Mayor, yes, I think it's a harder sell. I think that the reality is that we can still have, you know, that Jumbotron over there. It's going to be pretty difficult for people to turn sideways. We actually just solved the problem on the hill with people trying to turn sideways to sit and see a show. I think we'll have the same problem there. I think you'll get some people that will sit back there and, you know, kind of sit for a little bit. The nice thing about the park is, at the end of the day, if we had the Jumbotrons didn't, we're unique in the fact of, you can sit anywhere in that park, and then you can walk up to the very front of the stage, stand in standing room only for the whole concert, two or three songs, whatever, and walk away again, which is a huge point for folks, and I think it's great. But I think the reality is, yes, that's going to be one of those situations where you don't have it back there. That's the people, it's, you know, their first impression of what we did and everything we went through to get to that point. And I think that, you know, it would be a harder sell coming back. And I think it could be more expensive in the long run. I don't know what the costs are and how it costs going up with building or buying Jumbotrons. If we didn't do the building, Jason, of all the structures that are needed with the price of steel and stuff, that all goes up again on it. But I think it's a harder sell when you come back after it again. But I fully understand if that's the decision, that's what needs to be done.
Mayor, last...
I'll go ahead.
Can this be split where we go move forward with those that are essential and just, just take out the Jumbotrons and revisit that at a later time?
I mean, I could certainly have that ready for council since it sounds...
What we could do is put it on unfinished business, prepare an amendment to that effect, and there would be an up and down discussion and vote on the amendment and look at both, you know, we've got a week before council to prepare something.
I can do that.
Alderman Bug had a comment question?
I do. Can we go back one slide? I think it's back one. Where you see the back of the property with the two Jumbotrons? Yeah, maybe is that one?
Yeah, that one right there. Oh, the wide shot there. There's one circled, I think, Jason.
Yeah. Not sure which direction it is though. Yeah, that, that one.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Jarvis, you said the, the entity that we were talking to said that they did not see a problem sitting on that back lawn and looking west into the sun. Can we have, like, some concrete examples of venues from them where you're sitting on a back lawn looking directly west into a setting sun, and there's no issue?
Sure.
Yeah, we need some examples because I know just on sitting on the deck at times and looking in the sun at that, you're higher up.
Right.
But there were definitely issues looking in that direction. I don't know, you know, the angle where you are on the lawn, and then you said the Jumbotrons are 17 by 14?
Yeah, they're 15 by 12, something like that. I can, I can fine tune that.
So, I mean, it's a different angle, but I, I think we need some concrete, you know, examples
Sure.
of that. Yeah, I think that's going to be really helpful because if we don't have those and then we open up and you get a bunch of people back then, they're like, oh my God, I can't see anything. I'm blinded by looking at them. We, we've kind of missed our, our chance to kind of look at that, so.
Any other, Alderman Franco?
With the reservation, renovations, rather, at the park, how many more people do we think we will get in there?
At least a thousand.
Thousand more. Give us a total of what, 7,000?
Yep, 7,000.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And how much revenue is that, 1,000 people?
It all depends on the ticket price, right? The, you know, and it's also the ticket price that also increases the fees that we have that on the tickets, it also increases, increases beverage and food revenue on top of it.
And Jim, when you, in your experience, and you've been doing this for a long time, obviously, when you say it's a harder sell, can you be more blunt than that?
Sure, I think that you're...
What would be truly the ramifications if we don't move forward in the way that was originally?
My gut is, you're going, we're not going to get many people to want to go back there. Once the, we hit a certain point, yeah, people are going to come back, see there's nothing back there. You, even though it's going to look pretty and it's got food vendors all over, that I just stand by the fact of, everybody's used to the Jumbotron era in the concert world now. And so I think that it ends up being a space that's very rarely used.
And then what would that do to the, the types of acts that decide to come here or not?
Well, you know, when we start projecting on our capacity, we would probably eliminate, as we're putting in offers and doing budgets, that we're going to sell. We'll, we'll keep track of how much we're selling and how many people are sitting back there. And then, next time we put an offer, and we'll adjust accordingly knowing, you know, we can get 200 people that will take that or 100 people that will take that. And then we can't go after certain acts because it has that... acts because it has that impact on it. We just lost 900 ticket sales.
And the whole purpose of this project was to?
Yeah, the whole purpose of the project, I think, was, not that I think, the whole purpose was, you know, they came to us and said, what can we do to enhance this facility, make sure that it's got legs in the long run, and that we can increase the size acts and increase profitability. And so that's how that all came. Every piece in here, and Jason and I were talking about it recently, every, everything that has been designed all intertwines with one another, right? That, that new gate floor entrance that we're doing is made to be easier for people. It's, you can come off the bike path, you don't have to walk through the mud, which they have to do now. You come off the downtown area and walk right into the park. The bathrooms, that you're not waiting in long lines anymore. That whole area in the back where, you know, we have the JumboTrons, which we can actually use on the week to show movies. And the mayor actually had brought that up before, and we had a meeting on it. The beverage pavilions, to be able to, 20 windows and be able to deal with folks quicker, get them back out, watch the shows. The sky deck above allows us to get more sponsorships. Right now, we have two sponsorship decks that we can sell, and people are looking to expand. We can add an extra 200 to 300 people up on the hill because of the cement and, or whatever the, right, cement that's on the top of the hill.
Yeah, the tiered-
Yep. And then the back is absolutely designed to be able to accommodate bigger acts who didn't want to look at us. And I will tell you this, as we're putting out offers now, and I think we've got about 25 offers out for 2026. We've been asked already by agents, when we tell them, they've gone through the $25 million or whatever, $23 million renovation, and we explain that we've got this new artist building, and they've literally said, great, can you send us what it's going to look like, and then can you send us what the inside is laid out as? We have adapted the architectural drawings, and we send that as well. So you can see, you've got plenty of dressing rooms now, you've got showers, you've got everything that you need to actually accommodate a band, multiple bands if we need to.
And you said earlier that the Chicagoland market is the most competitive market in the nation.
Yeah.
And so by making a, a change in, in what we originally tend to do, what you're really saying is, we're now choosing not to be that, that competitive with everybody.
Yeah, I, I truly think that every little thing that we have anymore, it's a fight for, especially with, I said, all the different venues that we have on staff. I mean, Orland built a venue now, and Ottawa's building a venue, and so everybody around us, but especially the big ones. And so every little thing that counts, right? We have artists that come through, they love playing River Edge Park, they love looking out there and seeing the city in the backdrop. But at the end of the day, they don't want to get off that tour bus anymore, which they wanted to because they're on the road for three months because we don't have a facility for them, that we need that extra edge to be able for them to go back and go, yeah, we want to come back next year, we want Kiss to come back, or, you know, we, One Republic, or some of the shows we've never been able to do before, won't look at us anymore because we don't have that infrastructure.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, so for next week, we will put this on unfinished, if you want to work with staff to prepare an amendment to accomplish what you're looking to accomplish.
Mayor?
And we had one other question about, that you'll get back to Alderman Bug on-
Yes, sir.
-with respect to some sort of perspective on, on the sound and visibility. Alderman Smith?
Is there a way that you can do some type of a numbers part where, let's just say, that 1,000 people area is unused, depending on the ticket price, how much revenue you think we will lose on food and beverage, because now we have this empty space there versus, you know, the same ticket price if we had those people there, what we think they'd be spending, so that we can see, we really need to see what we're losing by giving up this, this end. And we have to look at this in dollars and cents as well. It can't just be, you know, we can't piecemeal. If we're going to look at it, we got to go in all the way. So whether it's a, you know, an inexpensive ticket and, and the whole family's coming, or whether it's one of our high-end tickets and it's just adults, you know, what that would look like as far as food and beverage, income and revenue to the city.
You bet.
Thanks.
Understood exactly-
Yeah.
-what she wants, and we'll probably just want to put one slide together on that. Hopefully, we don't have to go through the whole presentation. But it's-
Okay.
-basically presenting some scenarios, I think, is what you're wanting to look at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Just a follow-up on her request. Can you also provide how many sold-out concerts you had last year and the year before?
Last year, no.
It's, it's really probably not going to be-
My apologies, yeah, not 20, not-
Yeah.
Just give us the, the rundown, the numbers of how many sold-out concerts you've had, and I guess just the revenue we've, we've received at, at these concerts.
Sure.
One thing to say, I don't, I don't think that'll be an apples-to-apples comparison, simply because you're moving from cover bands to hopefully something bigger that, that will attract more people. But I would say, if you can provide ticket numbers on the show, this many.
You bet.
Okay. Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Jason and Jim. Okay, so this agenda item 250741, we'll go on unfinished business.
Yes, Mayor.
I'll ask the vice chair to continue.
Next item, gladly. 25-0741, resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute a change order to the existing contract with Racial Architects in the amount of $105,270 for design services at River Edge Park.
Correction. First of all, I want to just say that I read the wrong agenda item. So, so the unfinished is 250740, and then agenda item 250741, which is connected. Go ahead, Alderman Barrero, is that right? Unfinished on this one as well? Okay.
They're tied together. Want to have another question as well?
On this agenda item, you have a question?
Agenda item, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
And we are talking about-
25-0741, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Let me make sure that we, a question regarding, trying to find it exactly. Jason, we talked about this at the last committee meeting.
Yes.
You know, there were additional services that arose from newly discovered site conditions. The architect relied on the accuracy and completeness of the survey by the owner and his consultants. So, has legal reviewed any contracts that show who's actually liable for this extra work that we now have to pay for?
I was not paying as much attention as I should have to your question. Can you repeat it?
Has legal reviewed the contracts regarding this project to see who's actually liable for the extra expenses that we now are being asked to pay for, due to some lines that we apparently weren't aware of? Let me, let me ask a question differently. Are we the ones asking, that asked for the change order?
Correct, yeah. So, I guess there, there were two lines that were in the way. One, either whichever way they would have been found, we would have had to do a change. But we elected to change the footprint of the building to accommodate where the two lines were, rather than go through the time and expense of relocating utilities, which would have been more. So, we made the decision, hey, what can you do, architect? And they said, oh, well, we can modify this floor plan a little bit, and we can modify this floor plan a little bit. And that saved us a lot of money from having to go through a relocation process. So, it was more, we kind of made the decision moving through, it makes more sense at this stage of the game. We don't want to move our 60-inch storm sewer to accommodate the foundations. We don't want to move, we don't want to work through comm ed and experience any kind of delays or any costs to have them move as well. So, it was a very small change order in, in those regards. I mean, there were a lot of little $20,000 pieces, but the storm sewer relocation would have been massive. And then another part of the foundation redesign, that was a big chunk of this, was they came up with some unique foundations that were able to trim the, the cost of the foundations on the beverage pavilion by somewhere around like $300,000. So, each one of the, the change orders through the contractor, or through the architect resulted in savings from a construction standpoint, that we would have had to bear regardless.
And I remember during committee, Alderman Messiakos mentioned, products of this size, these things happen. But again, you know, as I'm reading this, they relied on the accuracy that either us or our consultants provided to them. So, you know, we saved 200,000 plus on the cameras. You know, we're looking at the JumboTron now, that's another 800 grand, and, you know, we're looking at another 100,000 here. So, again, my question would be, you know, who does it really fall on? Is it, was it on the city? Was it on the consultants that are working with the architects? And, you know, as we talked about, place it on us. Maybe a better question might be, I mean, the change order process is pretty common in construction because you always, especially remodels and renovations, you don't know what you're going to run into. I would say, how often do we involve legal in these issues? I mean, usually it's when it starts to balloon and there are fingers starting to point about it was this person's fault. Just being in construction, I know Alderman Messiakos is also an architect and probably goes through this in his daily life.
Yeah. I mean, specifically with these builds, I mean, we knew that the gate building had to go where it went, and we knew the beverage pavilion had to go where it went. So, you know, rather than paying for the utility relocations, which we could have done by, you know, to say, hey, we, we really want this floor plan to be exactly like this. This building had to go right here. And for the beverage pavilion, you know, beverage pavilion building, all those foundations had to go where they went, just by the layout of the building itself. So it was more, we could, we could go down that road. There's a lot of relocations we do. There's another agenda item here where we're going to be relocating some fiber for a roadway. That's a lot easier than the time and expense it would have taken to relocate these. And there, again, there's a small amount of play in the buildings that made sense to just go that route. And with the foundations having to go right where they were, yeah, that was, that was the, the easier route for us. And again, then there was another chunk of foundation redesign in there, which ultimately saved a lot of money, so.
Typically, it's a, it's a process, and part of the process, it's not something typically involved legal-
Yeah, we had-
Typically involved legal in.
Yeah, well, and I think the other part of it, too, is we had a lot of schematics and things drawn before we had even given them all the detailed survey information or any of those things, anyway. So, they were kind of already down the path before we even-
I think the question you may be asking is, did he perform per, per his original contract before this change order came up? And did he complete his contract obligations?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Once a, once a, once a professional finishes their, their services for a specific product and it goes out to, to bid, they're complete, especially if it's signed off on by the owner. So, anything above and beyond that afterwards is naturally a change order. Start trying to figure out, pointing fingers and trying to separate the needle from the haystack at this point, when I don't even know if there is something to be, we're supposed to be looking at, is a grave concern, because it also sends out a, a very irregular message to anybody who is looking to do more work with our city, moving forward, professional services, and the rate that they're looking to add on, if not to do a project here, meaning added costs because of what they, there may have concern with how we work with them, so.
And that's a fair point. But again, as we answer to all of our constituents and we continue this conversation of the financial situation in our cities, and I think it's our responsibility, as elected officials up here, to ask these questions so that those watching now or sitting here in the room with us understand that we are asking these proper questions, and especially with the topics that we've just been going through, again, around the, the budget itself.
No, I mean, it was a, yeah, it's a great question. And, you know, I, if it wasn't something where we were of the opinion that they were owed additional compensation, we, we shoot down a lot of change order requests, too.
My last question is, when you talk about this, we save money going this route, could you talk about how much money you would guesstimate?
Yeah, so the original, so one of the major changes on the foundation for the beverage pavilion, there's a long walkway for ADA compliance, so that someone can actually take a wheelchair up the ramp to get to that new VIP deck. That original foundation was based on everything that we had available with the, the boring and the rock location. Those were going to be of the same foundation system that the rest of the beverage pavilion was on. And as we started going through the costs of what that was actually going to look like, it was going to be, and again, don't, don't quote me on it, but it was somewhere in the 200 to 300,000 range that we were going to save by not having to do drilled piers for that. So they were able to redesign it with what's called ground modifications, and then going to a more standard, a conventional footing with footings, with a conventional foundation with footings at a much less burial depth. So, that in and of itself really helped pay for things and keep things moving along on, on schedule and under budget, too.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this agenda item? This agenda item will also go on unfinished business.
Mayor, we have one more in the last item here for the committee. Item 25-0742, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute a contract with National Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $60,000 for fiber relocation in association with the Farnsworth and Biltor roadway improvement project.
Consent.
If there are any questions from the council on this agenda item, with no further questions, this will go on the consent agenda.
Mayor, that concludes the report of the Infrastructure and Technology Committee.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Messiakos. Next, I'll ask Chairman Alderman Edward Bug to give the RAP committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The RAP committee met on September 16, 2025, and considered and reviewed the following items. 25-0707, resolution authorizing the appointment of Dr. Brian Caputo to the Aurora Civic Center Authority Board.
Consent.
Consent.
No further questions, this item will go on the consent agenda. Quick, quick question, Alderman Barrero.
I have a comment. This is not against Mr. Caputo. I'm sure he'll be a fine addition to, to the Aurora Civic Center Authority Board. My comment has to do with, you know, we have a lot of appointments on a regular basis for a lot of boards and commissions, but with this one, we have, all the members have expired terms, and we can't just, we can't seem to get these individuals reappointed. They're, they're continuing to serve, they have a passion to be on the Civic Center Authority Board, but yet, they're not coming forward for us to, to appoint them for an additional term. And, and I think it's sending the wrong message. If we truly want to be a partner with the Aurora Civic Center Authority, they deserve to have board members that are reappointed and not, and not serving, not knowing when their time is going to end. So I, I urge you to please act on this and reappoint those board members.
So what we are going to do is, we're working with the existing board members to have conversations, also looking at new board members, and having a dialogue with ACA as we go, one at a time, to reappoint. This person that we're replacing no longer lives in the state of Illinois. But it's going to be a back-and-forth process, and they will come piecemeal. And it's also part of ACA's fundraising plan, if that makes sense. So I'm not going to be reappointing everybody all at once, don't expect that.
Is there a timeframe?
Next six months. And it's been six or seven years for some of them, longer. And that came at the request of ACA. So, as we continue to build the relationship, we'll go back and forth on individual appointments, people that want to serve and live in the ACA service area.
Move for approval.
That, that was going on a consent agenda?
Yep. 25-0724, resolution authorizing the reappointment of Ramona Wood and Craig Guntie to the Aurora Civil Service Commission.
Consent.
And finally?
With no further questions, this appointment will go on the consent agenda.
Excellent. Finally, 25-0730, resolution authorizing the reappointments of Gerald Shapshina, Eric Rodriguez, Linda Cole, Judy Durham, Manil Shah, and the appointment of Shannon Buckley to the Black Grant Working Committee.
Consent.
Consent.
And hallelujah.
No further questions, this item will go on the consent agenda.
That concludes the RAP committee report.
Okay. Now we've finished with the committee reports. We are in need of a closed session pursuant to the following section of the Open Meetings Act, Section 2C11, to discuss litigation. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session and therefore adjourn this committee of the whole meeting with no further final action or public business to take place for the purpose of this meeting following closed session?
Second.
A motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This meeting will be adjourned upon completion of executive session. If we could all be back by 7:00 PM, we'll, and clear the room by 7:00 PM.